Good evening. It's June 21st, Tuesday, and the time is 7:02 PM. And I will call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. I would like to simply remind everyone that tonight's meeting is being aired live and recorded. If you would kindly join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I do.
Do the flag.
Do the flag.
For the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, just as it was created.
Thank you. I note that we have a quorum present. Two of our members are participating remotely, councilors Rushton and Souza. The council has been advised of the recent passing of a veteran in the town. And I'm referring to Mr. Andrew Postel. He passed on May 21st, 2022. He was a member of the United States Navy from 1939 to 1946, and served with distinction as a member of the Greatest Generation. I would ask you all, please, to join me in a moment of silence in his memory. I thank you. First item on our agenda would be the approval of minutes. There are two meetings, the minutes of which we need to consider approval of tonight. And I would remind councilors that these are the meeting minutes for May 24th and June 7th. We've had a number of absences during that period, so keep in mind that you may need to abstain from one or both of these meetings or votes. Firstly, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of May 24th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll require a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing to discuss, yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Mr. President, I don't know if Frank's having the same problem, but we cannot hear Debbie on the radio, excuse me, over the Zoom link. But if it gets to me, I'm not a sentience. I was not present.
Hey, I was not present at that meeting either, so... Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You may want to continue that, then, because you only have four votes. So you may want to continue that.
We will continue the matter of the approval of the minutes for May 24th until our meeting in July. Approval of the meeting minutes for June 7th, 2022. I would consider a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and maybe we have a roll call, please, for that vote.
I don't think, was he at that meeting? I don't know if he was even there.
I wasn't at that meeting.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Approving the minutes of June 7th, but I don't think he were there.
He wasn't there.
I don't think he was there.
Mr. Wood?
Abstain.
I abstain.
So we don't have four votes there.
And Mr. Rushton?
I'm a yes.
So there's only four?
So just, I would just make a motion and make a motion to continue both for the next scheduled meeting.
I have a question through you to the town attorney.
Yeah.
Why do we need a majority if there were absences? We have a quorum in the meeting here. There was quorum in the meeting there. The vote should carry the minutes.
The, I think technically you're right. The problem is we don't have a quorum of people that can actually vote on the particular thing because they all had to recuse themselves. So it's a little bit different than a yes or a no vote. There's literally not a quorum of people to actually be able to vote that yes or no just based on all the recusals. So I'm just being safe.
Very well. So I would entertain a motion to continue the matter of the approval of minutes for those two meetings until our July meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Souza?
I was absent at the last meeting.
This is this vote right now, though.
Please?
This is just a vote we're taking to move it to the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Next item is announcements from the president. I have no announcements this evening. Proclamations, we have none to discuss this evening. Citizen open forum. I would invite any citizens who care to address the council to please step forward and make your remarks and identify yourself along with your street address. Is anyone here to present? No, it appears not. Seeing none. Our next item are appointments. We have two groups of appointments to consider this evening. First of all, a new appointee to the position of Energy Committee member. And the candidate is Thomas Carson, who is proposed for the term of 2022 through 2025. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Consulor.
I fully support Tom Carson for this appointment. Known Tom for years. He's really excited about being able to get on the committee and making a contribution.
Very good. I thank you. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And we have reappointments. Two existing committee members who seek to continue their service to the town. Shirley Phillips for the Cable Advisory Committee for the term 2022 through 2024. And Nicole Holmes, also reappointment to the Open Space Committee for the term 2022 through 2024. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none. If we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. I would just like to congratulate all of the candidates for their respective appointments to town committees. Thank you. Next item, hearings. We have no hearing scheduled for this evening, nor are any licensed transactions before us this evening. We have no presentations to present, and so we're going to move directly to the town manager's report. And I'll turn it over, please, to Mr. Dutton to speak with respect to Mitchell School matters.
Thank you, Mr. President. Got two matters which are on the updated agenda for this evening. One is the potential or possible Mitchell School, New Mitchell School delay, construction delay. And I'll address that one first. You may or may not know I made reference to it last meeting, but the Mitchell project has been extended about four weeks due to a delay in the arrival of the electric transformer. There was a shipping delay, as has been the case with a lot of items, but there was a shipping delay in the transformer. It did arrive on site. There was a little bit of a delay in getting National Grid in to get it wired and connected to the building system. And happily, as of last week, I can report it is now working, and the school is online with its permanent power. So this delays the building commissioning a little bit because it delays the systems getting up and going. And when you get the systems up and going, or when you start the systems, it's not like, you know, flicking a switch in your house. They need to be, the manufacturer's technicians come. They work with the project engineer and the contractor to get all of the systems up and going and then properly balanced. So the good news is that the project completion is in sight. There is a slight delay, but there is nothing in the horizon that indicates there's going to be any additional delay due to anything seen or unseen, or unforeseen or foreseen, rather. So that's the good news in terms, another good news in terms of cost. Just a little addition, change orders have come in at, when it's all said and done, we believe $803,000. About $231,000 of that is, makes up for unknown site conditions. So the owner requested and building-related change orders stand at roughly 1% of the total construction budget, which is pretty good for a project of that size and complexity. We are still on target. Sorry, I'm just, there we go. So we're still on target to complete the project for less than $67 million, which is substantially less than the $80.6 million which the town voters voted to approve. So that's a little bit of an update on the delay with the little cost information added in. But I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Yes, Consulor Wood.
So, you know, I know they have plans to move schools around and move kids in and be underway by the school year, so do these delays impact those schedules at all?
Nope. The delays will not impact the start of school at any of the schools. The move is scheduled right now for middle of August. So it should, and given the people that are involved in the move and the contractors, it should go very smoothly and relatively quickly. So we're still on, everybody is on track for opening day, which is September 5th, 6th, in that area.
Thank you.
And Consulor Moore?
I actually had the same question, so Bill beat me to it.
Who, Consulor Moore escaped my peripheral vision, but thank you both. I have no further questions for the town manager. Any other questions?
Nope. I'll, I proceed right on to the lease update, if you would like.
Please do.
The, so I was asked to look to see what the lease arrangements were for the schools. As you may or may not know, the regional agreement calls for the towns to lease their respective schools to the district for no compensation. I thought it was a dollar, but it's not. It's no compensation. And for a term of exactly 20 years. There's, I've checked with Rainham. There's no indication that we actually ever have signed a lease for any of our schools on either side of the district. My assumption is that the reason for that is that much of the, most of the terms of a lease are really spelled out in the regional agreement. So whoever was around at the time just didn't feel the need to actually execute leases. But I am happy to initiate the negotiating and signing of leases, if that pleases the council. I have talked to town attorney in Rainham. He has no recollection or knowledge of any leases being negotiated or signed either. So it may be a good time for the respective political boards, town council, and the Board of Selectmen in Rainham to have a discussion about how we want to proceed with executing leases, which are referenced in the regional agreement, by the way. So I would leave that to the council. I'm happy to extend any consensus or relay any consensus to Rainham. If there is a consensus, we can proceed accordingly.
Yes, Consulor Wood.
Thank you. You know, I don't want to go back and revisit history, but if you are going to do a lease agreement, I firmly believe that the town, given that it's a town building, should be responsible at least annually for inspection of structure and other pieces of the building itself. Because I think that if that had been in place with the old elementary school, the roof line would have been noticed to be incomplete. The snow removal might have been done at a quicker pace, and we might have had a different outcome than we are now. So if we've got a brand-new building, it's going to be signed off, but I think annually there should be an inspection by inspection services to make sure everything is in good shape. Thank you.
Yes, Consulor Moore.
Through you to the town manager. I think building on Consulor Wood's comments, I like the idea of a lease. I think there are two things in particular that would be good discussion points. One is just alignment on naming rights. I think there is alignment, but it would be good to just have that on paper. And then the second one is expectations around maintenance. I think similar to what Consulor Wood said, as we hand these buildings over, there's a commitment to keep them up to date, keep them maintained. That includes the physical property, but also the landscape. So it'd be good for us to just have, know each other's expectations around that upfront.
Thank you, Consulor. Any further questions on that matter? Thank you, Mr. Dutton. It does seem to be the case that there's a certain groundswell of opinion that would lead us to call for a formal lease agreement. And if you would be able to please prepare the appropriate draft for review by the council, that would be most appreciated.
Happy to. Thank you.
Moving on then to discussions. We have no discussion scheduled for this evening. Are there any committee reports that councilors would care to advise? Yes, Consulor Wood.
Sure. I'll just get ahead of the ball here. So Budget and Finance, which was Dennis and myself tonight, met earlier with the town manager, finance director, an expert in a number of rates related to water. And so when we go and we look at F9, sorry, fiscal year '22, '69, we'll probably have a little bit of discussion about those rates. The vote came back as, I believe, Dennis, it was 1-1 whether to recommend this as a whole. And the rest of the items, '70, '71, '73, '74, we were unanimous in our recommendation back to the council.
I see. Thank you very much, Consulor. Any further committee reports? No. Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. President.
Legislation for action.
Mr. President. Just one on committees.
I'm sorry, Frank. Yes, please. Go right ahead, Consulor Souza.
All right. Several months ago, I put in an ordinance to allow the sale of raw milk. It went to committee. It's been there for a long time. They were supposed to set up a meeting with the Board of Health. Evidently, they haven't done that yet. So I'm requesting that that comes back to the council at our next meeting, and we hold a hearing on it. And I passed this by the town attorney, and he said, "That's doable."
Then, Consulor, is that a motion?
It's a motion, sir.
All right. A motion has been made to return that matter of the proposed raw milk ordinance to the council for consideration at our July meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
The motion has been seconded. Discussion?
Yeah. What committee did this go to, I guess?
To the Community and Economic Development Committee.
And it hasn't been?
Well, I...
You haven't had a meeting?
Haven't had it.
Okay.
We, I am a member of the committee. I know that a recent attempt was made, actually, to hold a meeting to discuss that matter this week. And unfortunately, it was a rather short week, and we also had a workshop scheduled, as well as the council meeting this evening. So it wasn't possible to schedule it for this week. So that's the latest activity as far as the committee is concerned.
If I could interject. So I believe the advice I discussed with Mr. Souza was that you all have the authority to pull something by vote out of committee. But that still has to be an agenda item in some sense, be it in discussion or be it as legislation for action that isn't technically being acted on. I don't see that on your current agenda, so I don't know if that maybe didn't get in. So I don't believe you can take a vote on that because you should have the ability to discuss if you want to pull it out of committee. And it should be noticed to the public before you do that or take that action. So I don't believe you can do it at this point by just bringing it as an item to be voted on. I think for the next meeting, if it doesn't come out of committee and Mr. Souza still wishes to have it before you all, he certainly can ask to have it on the agenda, and then you all can have a discussion if you want to pull it out of committee or not.
All right. Thank you. So...
So that motion was out of order?
Correct.
So if, in fact, the committee does conduct its business in the interim, we can act upon it in due course. Or barring that, we could make that an agenda item for our July meeting.
Discussion, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, it can be for any, I mean, you could put it as a discussion. You can put it legislation for action and have the action be to pull it out of committee. However you want to do it is fine. It just, I'm more worried about the open meeting and it not being advertised so that someone can come discuss if it should be pulled out of committee.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to legislation for action. Order FY '22-069, Water SDC System Development Charges. And I would defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. So traditionally, when someone comes into town and builds a new structure, there's what we've often referred to as a connection fee for water service. That has, for a single-family home, I think that's hovered currently a little more than $3,000. Because we are entering a phase where we're going to be needing to make substantial capital improvements to our water infrastructure, we have reconfigured these. We've asked a consultant to come in and reconfigure the, what we now call system development fees to better reflect what it costs us to be able to tie in whoever's requesting to tie in. So for example, if you have a 1-inch line or less, which I think 90-plus percent of the town does, you would be looking at a fee of $3,482 or rounded up $3,500. That's not disproportionate to what we charge now.
Can I interrupt? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify that because I've, what we talked about and the, you're fine presenting it that way, but it's for new connections.
Correct.
Not for existing connections. It's not a charge we're charging for existing homeowners.
Correct. This is, just so people know, this is for new connections, presumably new construction. But for new connections, people that are not currently connected to the water system. Correct. So what the consultant has proposed and what we have brought to the Finance Committee and Budget and Finance reflects essentially what it costs for folks to buy in to the existing system. So we've taken our current infrastructure, accounted for the depreciation, and come out at the other end with a total system value, essentially, a system value, what our system is worth. And that's a little, little over $49 million. That does account as well for the new water treatment plant. So based on that, when new people request service, the connection size being 1-inch, they would come in, if it was a single-family home, for instance, you'd be 1-inch or less, and you would pay $3,500. Where the majority of the changes really come are in the upper end, at the 8-inch, 10-inch, and 12-inch main lines coming into your facility. So right now, we don't have any facilities that have a 12-inch line. You would have to be a pretty sizable manufacturing firm or building to justify a 12-inch line. But if that were the case, we'd be looking at a system development fee of $539,000. Now, that sounds like an outrageous amount of money, but if you are manufacturing something, if you're building a manufacturing plant that requires a 12-inch line, you're investing multiple millions of dollars into that plant. So essentially, what we're asking the council to do is adopt the methodology, which would result in the fees that are laid out in your packet, for 1-inch connection, as I said, $3,482. A 1-and-1/2-inch connection would be $1,741. And then it goes up, in some cases, quite dramatically from there. But again, these are for new connections. The methodology, I think, is important to adopt because it establishes how we are going to calculate system development charges over the course of many years. Right now, we don't have a hard and true system development rate sheet. We'd like to get this out there. We'd like to publish this so developers coming into Bridgewater know exactly what their cost is going to be to run water to their facilities. But essentially, that's what we're asking the council. Adopt the methodology that results, right now, would result in these, this schedule of rates. So I can dive more into it, if you'd like, into the methodology or so forth, but I'll defer to Budget and Finance Committee members.
Are there questions for the town manager? Consulor Moore?
Maybe not. So, actually, I guess it is a question. So I guess when I think about this particular service in town, this, to me, is the most important piece of infrastructure that we run for the community. It's also, I think, probably the least understood when we have things like stained water and concerns about the quality of water. And if I understand it correctly, as we bring in new connections, that can create disruptions in our water system that potentially amplify the stained water and some of the other things. So it creates, actually, a lot of overhead for the town. In addition to just creating a connection, it creates a service response to the neighbors and a lot of other things. So I guess my question is, you know, is this actually enough to cover not only the connection and the service, but all of the surrounding capabilities that we need to provide? And the reason I raise it is, you know, there are some sister discussions going on at the state level about a water bank and some other ways to support this specific piece of infrastructure. If we're going to make a change, I would love to see us actually make sure we have enough money to cover the true expense of that.
So that, your question is perfect because it leads me to something I forgot to point out, which is quite important. For the system development fees that we would be charging if the council adopted this, we segregate those. So it's very similar to the legislation that's actually being considered. We're a little bit ahead of the curve because we would be segregating all of the monies that we would generate from the system development fees into a separate capital account, which can only be used for capital improvements to the system. So a lot of those capital improvements specifically designed to sort of ameliorate some of the concerns you're talking about. Whether, right now, we're looking at pipe replacement. We have a lot of AC pipes still in the ground, which is very common, but needs to be replaced. We've got aging, other aging pipes that need to be replaced, cast iron, so forth, that need to come out and be replaced. So it would cover those expenses. It would not cover, you know, chemical, purchase of chemicals to treat, you know, the discoloration, but it would go a long way in starting to permanently solve some of the problems that we've had relative to some of the water discoloration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Dutton?
I got one question.
Seeing none.
I got a question here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consulor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, on the system development charge for the 1-inch connection, are those connections paid for by the developer before the house is sold? Or when someone buys a home, do they now pay to connect? And saying, "I'm in my house now. I need water. Connect me." Where does that charge come in?
So that charge would come in, if you're buying into a new development, and again, this is all new connections, new houses, new facilities. If you are coming in and you're buying a home in a development, that developer has all... has already paid all of these fees. You would not be paying an individual fee at closing, for instance. If you were building a single-family home on an existing street, that's a different story. Then you would be subject...as is the case now, you would be subject to that if you were constructing your own...doing your own construction on a single-family home and, you know, pick a street.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, yes?
I'll ask you to also describe the surrounding community research that Doug did.
So, our consultant did some research on surrounding communities because, you know, that is not an unreasonable comparison to make. And I'll just bring up...oops. Well, in any case, East Bridgewater has a very simplistic...and that's not a knock by any means, but has a very simplistic, relatively inexpensive tie-in...we'll call it a tie-in fee comparable to what ours currently is. East Bridgewater does not have, you know, the commercial or industrial new plants coming on anytime soon, so that's understandable. West Bridgewater has a slightly comparable tie-in rate to us...I'm sorry, a comparable methodology to what we are proposing. However, they break theirs out into different components. So, it's a little...it appears like it's a little less than what we would be proposing to charge. But again, their methodology is slightly different...similar, but slightly different, and they charge for different things that we would be lumping into one system development charge.
Counselor Wood?
And when was the last time these towns updated their rates?
I believe Doug said 2005, which is a long time ago. And so, we are...you know, ours, we updated a little more recently, but still, given the work that we have to do on our water, it's time to update them.
Are there any further questions? Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, I voted against these rates in committee, and I'll probably vote against them tonight. I do think that, again, I don't question the numbers. I do question the comparison that we got, although East Bridgewater and West Bridgewater are budding communities. It would have been nice to have seen Rainham and Middleborough as far as what their connection fees are. But I...as far as the one-inch connection, I mean, that's a big increase, and that cost will get passed on to the homeowner, and we all know that. When people are trying to buy their first house, every little bit helps when they're trying to get into their home. But the more important thing that stands out to me as far as these SDC fees is we were told in committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, a good-sized business that comes to Bridgewater is going to need a six-inch connection, which in this case is $174,000 connection. Now, to a $10, $20 million company, that might not be a lot of money to them. But it may deter them from coming to Bridgewater, and we're trying to become business-friendly, more business-friendly here. When they see these kinds of fees, they may go to East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Rainham, or Middleborough. Something small like this could deter someone from opening up a business here in Bridgewater. And we know that there are projects down the pipeline that we'd like to see come to town. To them, $174,000 may not be a lot of money, but if it's a developer that wants to put homes in for people that need a place to live, that's going to get passed off in the rental price that they charge for these rooms, for these apartments. And it's going to be reflective in the rents that a business might pay if they're building a small, you know, business plaza. So, these increases, again, are not going towards the monies that we voted to upgrade the system. They're going into a capital budget to repair things that come down the pike. So, this...I just think there could have been a slower increase in these or a smaller increase at this time to try to build up those reserves. And to be honest with you, when it comes to major projects like this, as they talk about at the state, they talk about at the federal level, there should be assistance to communities that do things like this. In our case, we're building reserves for this, which is okay, but when the state or the...I think the CARES Act or the ARPA monies and things like that and other things that may come down the pike, other grants that are out there could help us with any maintenance that comes down the pike. I think these are high. I think they are very high compared to what we saw in a small sampling of two very much smaller towns than us. So, that...those are the concerns that I have. Now, the bigger piece of this is what we're going to vote on next. And then the much bigger piece to this is what's coming next time, and that's the sewer connection phase, not so much the water connection phase. So, this is a lot of...a huge increase compared to what developers and businesses are paying now, and it could deter them from coming to the town of Bridgewater to open up their business.
I'll make a motion to approve this so that we can actually entertain discussion of the item itself.
That's what we did, didn't we?
We haven't made the motion yet.
Yeah, we did.
We were asking questions of the town manager.
Then if you would...
I think so.
Counselor, if you care to make the motion.
I'll make a motion, too.
A second.
To approve, right?
Right.
Thank you very much. And we'll continue our discussion now.
So, that's...those are the concerns I had in committee, and those are the concerns I have now. I don't...I don't just...I don't think the numbers are wrong. I don't think the numbers...I just think they're too high. I just think they're too high.
Counselor Wood?
So, I'll give my point of view, which I'm hoping that the council recommends this and votes this forward. A couple of different things. First of all, this is for all-new constructions. So, if there's a neighborhood going in of single homes, it's a single-home connection of $3,482 as opposed to whatever we're charging right now. We are charging something right now. It will bump up to $3,482. On a $600,000-$800,000 house that's being built now, that's a pretty small consideration. As Mr. Dutton pointed out, these funds collected are going into a capital reserve. The capital reserve would be then used for things like well replacement or other infrastructure upgrades down the road. And that all works in favor of improving our water quality, which is pretty low right now, at least from a perception point of view, because it's tainted water. Literally, it's tainted brown in some areas. So, the fact that we're upgrading the water plant and doing that and having this in reserve would do. The other thing you need to know in our discussion is that something like the four-inch and above is often used for fire suppression. So, it's for feeding sprinkler systems. So, while the connection charge for that seems large as by itself, the water usage on that is minimal. So, they won't be paying a gallon charge afterwards because it's a closed system unless they actually have a fire. The consultant did point out that some larger, very large companies would have a larger connection. And in that case, we're talking about a structure similar to the elementary school where it's, you know, $25 million or more for the value of the building itself under construction. So, I think this falls in line. I was surprised that some of the towns haven't upped their rates in prior years. They probably just see it as paying for the construction crew to open the road and, you know, connect. I don't think we'll ever see, you know, an eight-to-12-inch water main needed. If it is, it's a pretty big building, and it probably won't fit in the downtown area, you know, itself. I...you know, I am thinking of Lake Perkins where they are, you know, having maybe mixed use in their planning down the road. There, again, it's not, you know, a small number of units, and it's not a small number of businesses that'll go on that property. So, I don't think this align...if we find that it's turning away business, then I think we can rethink it. But I'm fine with this based on the discussion with the consultant, and I hope that...
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, Counselor Moore?
Thank you. So, I think, similar to what's already been said, maybe just a few other perspectives, I also support this. I actually would like to see the rates go higher. I...again, I think this is such a critical resource, and if we don't...if we don't work to collect money as we expand the use of that resource, we're ultimately going to have to go back to the town in other ways and get it. The other point I just wanted to point out is, when we start getting up to the volumes where these dollars really matter, you're talking about massive projects with a lot of line items in their expense. You're talking about land clearing expenses. You're talking about trucking equipment in. You're talking about the supplies to build. So, even though this line item might be higher compared to other towns, I would expect that other things about building in Bridgewater potentially could be lower. So, I wouldn't let the cost alone. I wouldn't necessarily assume that this line item cost in a large project would be something that would turn someone away. The last thing just to point out is, in my experience, when something costs more, people get creative. And we are looking to drive more kind of environmental-friendly, better use of water. If it costs more for larger water use, you might see people start to architect for more efficient water use, which would be a benefit in the town.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
There would be six to one to zero. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Order FY22-070, water rates. And I would once again defer to the town manager for comment.
Mr. President, this one is actually fairly straightforward. Our water rates reflect only the cost of doing business, operating the water system and the water plants. And so, understanding that, given we've got a new water plant coming online in FY23, the rates have to be increased in order to pay for the water treatment plant and also the additional staff to operate it. So, that's what is reflected here. We did ask the consultant again to recommend rates based on a pretty thorough analysis of the cost of the plant and the cost of the department. And he is proposing a three-step system, which is a little bit different than we currently have, but a one-to-1,500 cubic foot charge and then a 1,501 to 10,000 cubic foot charge and then over 10,000 cubic feet. Obviously, the more you use, the more you would pay for the cubic foot. But the initial charge being reflective of what most people...where most people would be in Bridgewater. But again, I'm happy to go over them if there are specific questions. Oh, I should add, overall, it's about a 24% increase on the water rates. Those are paid by current users. And I will say that...sorry, I just lost my train of thought. The rates are calculated specifically to offset the cost and the enterprise of operating the department, but my other thought was...
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved?
Motion and a second. And discussion?
Just one question.
Yes, Counselor Gallagher.
I have a problem with this one, too, but I...I'm going to support it because we need to remember that these rates need to go...these rates are being adjusted based on what we had to borrow to upgrade the water treatment facility. Unlike the last one, which is just building a reserve account, these rates reflect the money that we approved as a council to borrow to upgrade our water treatment facility. Some of these increases are a lot for someone. Percentage-wise, it's a huge increase. It's 50%. Dollar-wise, it may not seem that much when they get their bill, but some people might notice it. So, we should proceed with caution, but I'll support this one, but it is a big increase. But we've already approved the money, so this is just the mechanism to pay for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moore?
So, I also support this, but I am really, really nervous about the messaging around this one because I think from my perspective, someone is going to open a bill. They probably haven't watched this meeting or any other meeting. They don't realize that this goes to pay for a new water treatment plant, and they're going to say, "My water is brown. I've been saying it's brown for years, and all of a sudden, I'm paying twice the cost for something that is the same that it's always been." And so, I don't know what the answer is to this. I think this goes into the whole, you know, how do we sort of communicate with our residents about water quality? But if there is an opportunity specifically when this first rate hits somebody's bill to have an insert that says, "Here's what you're paying for, and here's why we have stained water, and here's what the town's doing about it," so that it's not just a rate increase, and it's the plan, I think that would just help people understand a little bit better about why the rates went up.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Again, the discussion on this with the consultant was interesting. I had a little bit of a problem with the wording on the supporting document that's with it because we need to be clear again in our messaging, and we will get called. Minimum charge means the flat rate. So, when you look at your water bill today, your flat rate is $1,250 per quarter. And after the new rates go into effect, the flat rate will be $25 for most homeowners. So, that piece will, you know, be like a, you know, 100% increase for a flat rate. The usage is on top of the flat rate. So, it's not a minimum...it's not like you haven't used any water, so we're going to charge you $25. We're going to charge you $25, and then we're going to charge you for the water. So, everybody should be clear about that when they talk to it. But to that point, it is to pay for a new water treatment plant. Rates are the way that we're allowed to pay that. The plan is not paid for any other way except by the users of the facility, which is everybody who uses water. So, I think the numbers are fair. You know, the plant costs what it does and it is. I think a good question, though, for the town manager is, once the plant comes online, when can we expect our water to be clear and not brown?
That is a great question, and I think the way our water system works is we've got...we will have two treatment plants that will treat all of our water. Right now, we've got one treatment plant that treats about 50%, roughly 50%. I can't remember the exact amount. We mix the water, so the two plants will be commingling the water in eventually when it gets up and going online. And it will take...I suspect that it will take some period of time, probably after the following hydrant flushing, in order for people to notice a very noticeable difference in the coloration of the water after that. But it will happen. It may take a little bit of time just to flush the impurities out of the system, but it will happen.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Counselor? Thank you. Any further discussion? Sorry, Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mr. Dutton, and I know I've asked you this question before, so it's not a surprise question, but no matter who you are, no matter how big your business is, no matter what facility you run in this town, everybody pays the same according to this sheet, correct?
That is absolutely correct. So, we are...we've worked very hard over the last couple of years to get everybody paying the same rate. We had some outliers. We've corrected that. Everybody pays the same rate. Everybody will be locked into this rate schedule.
Thank you.
Great question.
Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Just one last question. When would...when is the first bill where somebody... Just one last question. When, when would, when is the first bill where somebody would see this new rate? Is it before the new treatment plant goes live?
It will be before the new treatment plant goes live. So it's a good opportunity for us to add a stuffer, do some PR around, around what, what kind of changes people will see in both in their bill and in the quality of water and roughly what that timeline will be.
Great. Thank you.
I had, I had one other thing, if I could. I just wanted to point out, on these rates, we have worked really hard to use ARPA money to offset the total cost of the, of the treatment plant project. We've also worked very hard to try to set aside reserves, which I think the council has voted to offset the cost, the overall cost of the, the water plant project. So what, what looked like a, an enormous increase actually is not quite as bad as we were originally projecting. So that's, if, if there's silver lining or if there's good news out of increasing water rates, that's probably it. We've been able to very strategically use ARPA funds, alternative funding sources, to keep, keep the total cost of the project down and therefore the total rate structure down as much as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask please for a roll call vote.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Save the sheets. Don't lose your sheets.
Our next matter is Order FY22-071, End-of-Year Transfers. And I would ask Town Manager Dutton please to comment.
Mr. President, the end-of-year transfers, for those that have been on the council, know that this is an annual event. This year's transfer is more than the 1% we like to stick to, but there are some outliers which are driving a little bit of the increase in cost. One is, is, is Budget and Finance heard just a little while ago, gas, oil expenses for town buildings, obviously. We've seen a substantial increase there. We've had some, essentially sort of emergency needs for mold remediation in the library, to name a few of the items that are driving town building increases. We've also seen some vacant positions in our fire department due to unexpected retirements also to illness. So we've had to cover with some overtime expense there in the fire department. And otherwise, also, actually also, Police Department Outbuilding was originally planned to be totally constructed by Bristol Plymouth. They did do the vast majority of the project, but there's some expenses that we have to cover due to their closure during COVID. So we've had to front some, some of the expense, unexpected expense there as well. So, but if you take out some of those, some of those expenses, we're down to about where we would normally be at end of year. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. And discussion? Yes, Consular Wood?
Actually, I should have made this in the form of a question when I had the chance. So we went through and discussed all the items. It is the largest transfer that we've seen. We had a good discussion. Tony came in and talked about the various pieces of what's bouncing between expenses and salaries and things like that. I will point out one item here that I, I found interesting. I don't know if Dr. Hunt is, is listening in tonight. He probably is. But this is a line item that goes directly to our LED light project. And you'll see that we're shifting $115,000, $112,490 from street lighting as a source of, of funds into others. And that's a direct savings for the LED, LED project, which, you know, he pointed that out, that we'd, we'd have a savings, and that's a direct impact of that savings. Now, next year, when we get into the budget process, we probably won't budget as much for the lighting, given a realization of what the cost is. But this, this is the savings that we were promised. So good work to the Energy Board and everybody else. Thanks.
Thank you, Consular. Further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Thank you.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Moving ahead to Order FY22-072, Acceptance of a Gift, the Howard Foundation for Council on Aging. And Mr. Dutton, if you could please comment for us.
The Howard Foundation has been very generous to the town of Bridgewater over the last few years, and they have given us a gift of $10,000 to be used only for senior programming. And so I would encourage the council to accept that.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I note that the Budget and Finance Committees and Finance Committee of the town have voted approval recommendations for this measure. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? And seeing none?
I will.
Oh, I'm sorry, Consular Wood?
I just want to extend thanks again to the Howard Foundation. I've seen this multiple times. It's, it's great, and the senior center gets to put additional programs on because of it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rushton? Is he not hearing?
Is that me?
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Order FY22-073, Transfer Order CPC VWPL Conservation and Preservation Historic, Historical Records Library Project. I note that the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees have voted a recommendation in favor of adoption. And I would ask please for the town manager to comment.
Mr. President, these, as you mentioned, the CPC has voted to endorse the project and recommend funding for you. I do know that there's been some confusion about how the council, how the community preservation voted it and how, how it's presented to you. What we do is break, the CPC broke down the project into a couple of different pots, so to speak. Not, not pots associated with their funding, but pots just associated with how they, they voted it. And so the total comes to $89,310,000. It's designed to digitize some of the documents and improve the, the rest, rather, restore some of the, some of the items and artifacts they have related to veteran service for folks serving from Bridgewater. And then also for, to fund the display capabilities for those artifacts and documents. So the explanation that you see in front of you is a little bit misleading, and we can certainly correct that. But the total appropriation that they are recommending, as I say, is $89,310. The CPC, as I also mentioned, voted it in two different recommendations. And if it pleases the council, we would propose appending the CPC's minutes, which we now have from the meeting, so that it's very clear how this money is to be expended. But, but I think it's a great project. I think the CPC also thought it was a great project, so I would encourage you to vote it.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I do think it would be appropriate and beneficial for, for the committee if we would in fact attach the appropriate minutes to, to this measure after, after passage. Thank you.
Does that need a motion?
Yes, Consular Moore?
Does that need a motion to append, or can we just do that?
I think, I think not, because it's really, it, it's the committee's own work. It's not ours. And we're simply attaching it in evidence.
Thanks.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to Order FY22-074, Transfer Order Community Preservation Act Styles and Heart Parkland Improvement Project. And once again, please, to the town manager.
Mr. President, the Community Preservation Committee voted to recommend $1,300,000 for the Styles and Heart Improvement Project, $200,000 of which comes from the CPC's Reserve for Open Space and $1,001,000 from their undesignated fund balance. As you know, there, we have planned significant improvements to the Styles and Heart Park, including parking, trailhead, trail improvements, signage, handicapped accessibility and so forth. And, and our projected cost, as I say, is $1,300,000. They have voted to recommend that. I can tell you that we have been accepted, the town's application for federal funding has been accepted, recommended by the, the state and rec, and, and forwarded to the federal government. And so we are anxiously awaiting word on whether or not we will actually get the grant funding. To the extent we get that grant funding, those would, those funds would go back to the CPC accounts in, in proportion to the expenditures that they are recommending that we expend. So looking forward to certainly getting grant funding, but also looking, very much looking forward to getting the project done.
Thank you. I note that both the Budget and Finance Committee and Finance Committee have unanimously expressed recommendation for approval of this measure. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second? A motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Consular Wood?
I'd just like to thank everybody that's been working on this project. You know, it goes back several years now to Lincoln Andrews and his family tying in the five acres on Route 18, giving us the ability to have better access to the park, tying into other plans. And really, the, the folks that manage nature and trails and things like that, getting very deeply involved, kind of put this project together. So the, the goal is to, is to really open access to a really wonderful open space. You know, we're shifting our council structure, but I've always felt that District 6 is kind of, you know, my home in the structure and will continue to. And a lot of people just don't know that this 72-plus acre property exists and has some wonderful features in there that are available. So this, this, thank you to Mr. Dutton and others for, you know, working with the CPC and the state and others to get this on the list and to help move, move it forward. And it'll be great to see this in action soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance, FY22-024, Zoning Ordinance, Zoning Map Amendment, Main Street, an act, a proposal that was put forward by Consular Souza. This item did appear on our last meeting agenda, but we decided that we would continue this so that Consular Souza would be present to participate. Firstly, Consular Souza, do you have any initial comments you'd like to make?
Yes, I do. When I looked into this further, well, first of all, I was called into Town Manager's office by him and, and I met with the Community Economic Development Director, and they asked me if I would go along with this, and we discussed it, and we did. But it didn't have the total picture. When I'm looking at this picture here now, the cover of the whole map, and you all have a copy of it, if you follow those dotted black lines, okay, they show you the new zoning change, everything within that area. When we looked at this house here that we were trying to change, what they did, it was, they started on one end and came from the road back so many feet, went to the other end from the road, came back so many feet, and followed the contour of the road. They did not take into consideration the property itself. When I look at this map, there are 14 lots that are divided into two zonings because of this project, what, the way it's set up right now. We were talking about one, but if you really look at it, there are 14 different properties. And if you're, if, if you're trying to bring businesses in and have them, have people, developers come in and build a business and put apartments up it to bring all this downtown, which we've been talking about for umpty dumpty years, you're making it so difficult for every single one, just like this house here, all the problems they had. All these 14 parcels, anytime they want to develop it, they're going to have to go to the planning board. They're going to have to get it rezoned. They're going to have to get it fixed because they're all split in two, two zones. And, you know, I'd like to see this one go forward today, but I really, really think we need to sit down and look at this whole project and say, it's the property lines, not some straight line that some committee decided to draw and slice up 14 pieces of property into two zones. Why they did it, I don't know. I have no idea. It certainly didn't help anything. But I, I'd like, I ask you to, this particular parcel, because there is somebody really interested in it, they want to move forward with it, I ask you to approve it. You can see where, I, I met with the, the Community and Economic Development Director and the town manager twice on this, and they were both all in favor of it, to get this, this lot set up so that they can do this construction. Now, the Community and Economic Development Director sends it back without a recommendation. It doesn't make any sense to me. Why would she do that? So I'm asking the council to approve this change now for that particular lot and to redraw it.
Thank you, Consular. Consular, I, I may stand to be corrected, but I believe that the, the solid, the, the dashed lines that show as, in a dark color on the map, actually reflect the existing zones. Whereas the lighter colored dashed lines show the proposed, the change to the zoning as it would appear if this proposal is in fact adopted. In other words, I think that the lots that we're now looking at that do show to be bisected and exist in two zones would be remedied by the adoption of the proposal, which would in fact follow the property lines. Is that not your understanding as well?
The map I'm looking at has a yellow line that only includes about one, two, three, four, five, six pieces of property. Okay? Six pieces of property. This is from Salvation Army down to the Yellow House. Okay? And, and it's the Yellow House where the problem is. They drew the line right through every single one of those pieces of property. Look at it. It doesn't, I'm looking at a map that I got from Town Manager, okay? And it's showing me clearly right there, here's the black line, dotted line, and this is what we created as the downtown zoning. Okay? And they're all straight lines, and they cut all these pieces of property in two. But tonight, I'd like to see us address the one on Main Street that I brought before you and get that approved so those people can move forward and do their building. But I'm saying, we have to look at the rest of this, because if not... But I'm saying, we have to look at the rest of this, because if not, every time somebody wants to do something on those lots, it's going to be a big delay, it's going to be more hearings, it's going to be a lot of cost for them, and this is unnecessary, because this thing was not done properly. Thank you.
Before we move to a motion, I, I'd like to raise a point of information.
Please do.
From you to the town attorney. So, in the meeting discussion with the planning board, and I'm a member, several of us are members of the CEDC Committee, the planning board, as you can see on the note, would not recommend the new zoning line outlined in yellow if it included Plot Twelve, but would recommend if Plot Twelve was removed. And their, their argument, which, their argument was that Lot Twelve is a non-conforming building and is not in the Central Business District now, and by including it in the line and putting it, putting the business into the Central Business District, it opens up the ability for the owner, whomever it is, to do whatever the Central Business District allows for building. So the question to Mr. Rollins, from a legal point of view, so the, the planning board is asking us to, is not recommending, but is tacitly recommending us to amend the zoning map and remove Plot Twelve from the, from the changes. Can we do that?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can amend the proposed zone, oh, come on, Red. You can amend the proposed zoning however you would like, in terms of what the ordinance says. Are you obligated to? Absolutely not. They're making a recommendation, essentially their recommendation is, they don't recommend the change, right? So from here, you can absolutely amend this.
Can, can we amend it without it going back to committees?
Yeah, I, I think that because that is a matter that has already been addressed at committee level, and I think it actually probably makes it less restrictive in a sense, I think we're fine without sending it back.
Well, I would entertain a motion to amend the ordinance as it appears by striking, from the language that's before us, the words Map Thirty-four, Parcel Forty-four. That particular parcel is the so-called Lot Twelve, which both the planning board and the CEDC Committee found to be the objectionable item. So I think what was the committee's, the CEDC Committee position, as well as that of the planning board, was that the language of the ordinance as presented and discussed at our joint meeting was acceptable, subject to the removal of Lot Twelve, which again, referred to here as Map Thirty-four, Parcel Forty-four. So I would entertain a motion to make, to make that amendment to the zoning ordinance proposal before us. So moved.
I'll second for discussion.
Yes. All right. And we, and we have a second, so who would like to engage in discussion?
The first goes first and the second goes second.
It makes perfect sense, I mean, both, as you say, both would be for the neighbors to change.
Okay. All right. Good. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I, I was not in favor of the change. I don't know if you guys voted before, I, I had a conflict, I may have left before the vote. I, I'm not in favor of changing this, because it is an existing business, and strategically, we want our businesses to conform to standards. So the discussion was, well, if the current operator of the dental office decides to cease operations, it would need to go back to a residence. Or they could continue to operate it as a dentist office, but I, I assert, based on other projects that I've seen around town, that they probably have a lot more leeway than we are giving them if they wanted to change the structure of the building and/or the use of the building, and that they would not be restricted to the nonconformity. I point to, to the new Bogarts that is a nonconforming building, did not have to go to planning, planning board in the beginning, and now has new apartments being added to the top of it. So I think it's in our town's best interest for where a, where a business is adjacent to other businesses and is already operating as a business, that we capture that business into our Central Business District, and so that any changes that happen to that business are then under the, under the restrictions placed by any code that we have in our Central Business District zoning, zoning code, as opposed to just going to random special permits and having, you know, variance boards take a look at it. I think it's in our best interest to zone in a business as a business and include it in the, in the business district.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Yes, Consular Moore?
I think I would echo Consular Wood's sentiment. I, I'm still learning about zoning, so I'll take that for what it is, but when I look at this building, an aerial shot of it has twenty-five parking spaces. It is a functioning business. It's been there for a while. It's bordering other businesses. I suppose it's conceivable that somebody might, at some point, want to take that back to residential. I think it's probably more likely that that will always be a business. It's already built to be a business. So I, I support the idea that if it's a business, let's call it a business and, and put it within the wrapper of other businesses in that area. Let's, let's not give it some special treatment, just because it's outside of an original boundary, so. But I, but I would love to hear other people's thoughts on this. It just seems, seems to be a business.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Mr. President? Mr. President Frank, who was on the-
Yes, Consular.
Okay. My initials document that I sent in, that went to the planning board, just looked at what we all refer to as the Yellow House and that lot, and how the back section of it was residential and the front section was in the zone, the business zone. Now, that was sent back, because the board said, that would be spot zoning. We don't want to touch that one little thing. If everything is in there, let's, let's include it, but let's not do one little thing. That's why this new plan came out, expanded it. What I want to be absolutely, all of that property with that Yellow House is going to be in the business zone, and they're going to be able to put, of that lot, which is residential.
Thank you, Consular. Is there further discussion? We have a motion that's been made and seconded to exclude from the proposed ordinance, Map Thirty-four, Parcel Forty-four, otherwise known as Lot Twelve. So I would seek, please, a roll call vote on that motion.
That, that's based on the zoning and the planning board-
Planning board and the Community and Economic Development Committee joint meeting, which each group arrived at that conclusion. That was our recommendation. If we could proceed to a roll call vote?
Sure. Mr. Souza?
Me? Yes.
Mr. Moore?
You blocked me out?
No.
Hear me now?
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
No.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
It's five to two in favor.
So now I'll make a motion to approve the article itself? That was just the amendment?
Yes.
Oh, it has to go to advertising?
Was it supposed to come to us, because it's, it's looking for our vote on here? I don't know why.
Well, we probably now have to vote to send it to advertising.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to send it to advertising. With discussion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And discussion, Consular Wood?
Yeah, this is, this may seem like a pretty radical change. You know, I hope when it goes to advertising, maybe we hear from some other neighbors, and, and that's why you send it to advertising, to let people know that this is going on. Two other things that came out during those meetings is, in a zoning change like this, we don't notify neighbors. It's not the same as, as a hearing on a site plan or something like that. So that's something we might want to consider, but I'll also point out, as you look at the map that was provided, take this home as homework, if you look at the block along Main Street of what was originally the two-hundred-foot setback from the street itself, which was set up originally as the zoning, zoning for Central Business District, most of the businesses on the northern side of the street are out of compliance with the zone. You can see their parking lots sitting outside of their building structures and outside of the zone. So there's, there's nonconformity all over the street here, and that's something that we need to work on strategically to pull all these things into realistic zoning, so that people, when people come to town, they know what to expect with our zoning laws and have predictable outcomes during their site planning. Thanks.
Thank you, Consular. Is there further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Rushton? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor-
Apologize, Debbie, I'm a yes.
Okay, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. We have no old business to refer to this evening. Moving on to new business, order FY twenty-two dash zero seven five, ratification of the amended agreement for the Bristol Plymouth Regional School District. Mr. Dutton, please.
Mr. President, Bristol Plymouth is our regional tech school. We are a member of Bristol Plymouth, and anytime changes are made to the district agreement, all the member towns, including the City of Taunton, have to agree to that amendment. Very basically, along with a lot of language change and, and some word changes, the, the biggest reason for the updated Bristol Plymouth Regional Agreement is the admission of Freetown as a, as a new member to the district. So the regional district is looking for ratification, which would essentially allow Freetown to join the district in FY twenty-four.
Thank you very much. I see no particular need to make a referral through a committee of this matter. I would urge that the council consider retaining this at the council for our second reading at our July meeting.
Mr. President, I was thinking, discussion, if I may, I was thinking that maybe this belonged in the hands of rules and procedures, but I, I could, I could see the argument either way.
Okay. All right, you-
So maybe if I can ask a question of the town manager through you?
Please do.
So the language that we're seeing here has been provided, right? It's not our language?
Correct.
Okay, then there's no need.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to order FY twenty-two dash zero seven six, Shared Streets Grant, and once again, please, to the town manager.
Mr. President, the town, and with the assistance and the participation and the partnership of Bridgewater State University, has secured a $200,000 grant from the Shared Streets Program, and in this case, it's to do sidewalk and curbing improvements on town streets that some run adjacent to Bridgewater State. I believe there's one that runs through Bridgewater State, but I would encourage the town to accept that grant.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton? I would entertain a motion for a referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Order FY twenty-two dash zero seven seven, Community Compact Fiber Grant, and Mr. Dutton, please, if you would, once more.
Mr. President, this is a grant through the Commonwealth, and it is designed, this specific grant is designed to hook up the regional school district to eventually to the town, town's fiber network. Certainly, it allows the police department some security benefits, and it allows the school to potentially, down the road, possibly share the Bridgewater State fiber connection, which unfortunately, tonight is not so great, but is usually really, really good, and potentially save the district a fair amount of money.
I thank you. I would entertain a motion for a referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if I could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
I'm also a yes.
Oh, sorry. And Mr. Moore? Whoops.
Thank you. Resolution FY twenty-two dash zero eleven, amend September 2022 town council meeting date. I think a fairly non-controversial matter, but as you can see, it would probably be wise and I think helpful for us to consider changing the meeting date for that September meeting to September thirteenth. I don't know that there's any particular need for this to be referred out to a committee. I would suggest that we retain this at the council for our discussion at the July meeting. Moving on to citizen comments. Are there any citizens present who would care to address the council? I would invite you to step forward to the podium and do so. Kindly identify yourself and, and your street, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Eli Waldy, Oxford Lane, Bridgewater. It's been a while since the talk of marijuana has been discussed here, so I'd like to update you with some recent information on the state of marijuana on the use of our nation. There are many new studies published by both the private sector and the federal government agencies that show troubling trends that have occurred over the last year, particularly among our youth as it relates to marijuana use. A recent report from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration reveals that marijuana is by far the leading cause of drug-related ER room, emergency room visits by kids. There are more than twice as many ER visits from marijuana than from opioids, meth, and cocaine combined for those ages eighteen and under. Another new study in the prominent medical journal Addiction details how marijuana legalization in four large states has led to increases in youth addiction versus non-legal states. This study, which looked at more than 21,000 youth in California, Nevada, Massachusetts-
Worse, I can't hear him at all.
-found that marijuana use among youth in these states is higher in comparison with non-legalized states. These and other reports confirm that marijuana poses a health risk, especially to our children. This is a problem driven by legalization in the addiction-for-profit marijuana industry, which does target kids and gives young people the idea that marijuana is harmless or perhaps even good for you. As you know, both Rainham and Bridgewater have banned retail sales of marijuana. However, we also know that the marijuana industry is not simply sitting by idle on the sidelines, and in fact, has filed lawsuits against several other South Shore towns just like us that have marijuana bans. The question of whether or not retail pot sales in Bridgewater actually occurs or not may now rest within the legal system and the outcome of at least one court case. As a result, the future is unclear on whether marijuana sales will become a reality in our town or not. Before any future decisions are made by this body, I urge all of you, including the town manager and town attorney, to ensure the following, that any associated court cases and rulings are 100% applicable to Bridgewater. If there is any doubt that, then the people of Bridgewater- the physical and mental well-being of all Bridgewater citizens, particularly the youth, as they are the most vulnerable. Let's not put any potential legal decisions ahead of protecting the welfare of our kids. That said, I strongly encourage you, when the time comes, and it might be within the next couple of months, to do whatever you can to put Bridgewater citizens first and not let any particular business, industry, or legal system dictate what is best for our town. Reality is that the legalization of marijuana and the increased availability through local pot shops will have a direct negative impact on Bridgewater, with the youth being most affected in our community if we don't do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edivaldi. Are there any other comments this evening from, yes, please go right ahead. If you would kindly identify yourself, do you--
Hi, Gina Gasconi, 35 Ball Avenue, Chair of the Community Preservation Commission, Committee. I'd like to thank the council for supporting the CPC for the two ordinances on the agenda tonight, for always supporting the CPC, and I'd like to thank Mr. Dutton for explaining the motion that CPC took. Thank you again.
Thank you. And if there's no further citizen comment, I would like to commence council comments, and I'll begin, please, with Counselor Souza.
No comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If I could proceed to Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate the organization of the Juneteenth event last Saturday. They did, put on a very good event to recognize the holiday, and kudos to our council president and our town manager, who gave very welcome remarks at the event. And now, we're on to the Fourth of July, which is only a couple of weeks away before we meet again. So, I encourage those that can continue to try to donate, to donate. I got my T-shirts. I'm sure everybody on the council has their T-shirts ready to go on July 4th. I have the banner in my garage. I'll bring that down. So, it, let's, let's enjoy that day. We all deserve a great celebration on July 4th this year, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Colombodis?
No comments. No.
Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Similar sentiments. I'd like to thank everyone involved with the Juneteenth event. I thought it was a great event, and I enjoyed seeing other counselors there, too. I think our, our participation matters, and, and I hope to see more participation next year. I also wanted to thank all of the new committee appointments. The town runs on volunteers, and so we certainly appreciate that, that effort. Also, similar sentiments around the Fourth of July. Looking forward to that as well. And then, the last note, school ends this week. I know that because I have two little ones at home that are ready for it to end. So, I wanted to just extend a special thanks to all the teachers who made it such a great year for the kids, and I hope all the kids have a great summer. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rushton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have any comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Wood?
Oh, great. I guess we're going alphabetical tonight. I'm always in the last. You know, I briefly stopped in for the Juneteenth celebration. Nice group there. Heard a great blues band. I wish I'd gotten their name that was on stage. Maybe someone will fill me in on, on who they were. I think it was a duet. And then, I come from Burnier's 71st, 71st Birthday Party event. It's amazing to have businesses in town that have that longevity. So, it's great. I share Dennis's sentiment about the July 4th. I will remind anybody who's listening, it's not too late to donate. I'm not part of the committee, but, and the town does not provide funding for the day or the event, and it's all done by, by small donations and business sponsorship. So, you know, if you enjoy the day, enjoy the parade, enjoy the fireworks, you know, contact one of the, one of the committee members and give a couple bucks. Let's see, I'm right on the same page with Edivaldi, in that youth should not have access, and you, by youth, I'm talking, you know, under, under 21, some would argue 18, but under 21 should not have access to cigarettes, alcohol, or marijuana. And to that end, the state makes for retail shops, makes it very difficult to enter a retail marijuana shop. You can't just go in and browse. They check your ID, they check your age, you are registered. If you make a purchase, your purchase goes into a database. You're limited, as an adult, for how much you can purchase per, per period, and I think it's a 60-day period. I may be confusing that with the marijuana, medical marijuana. But at this, at this point in the game, we have a brand-new shop that's open just beyond Burnier's. It's in Halifax, and it's exactly 1,656 feet away from Bridgewater. So, if at this point, we don't recognize that Bridgewater shoppers are leaving our town to shop at a nearby store, then we're just, we just have blinders on. And I, I think we need to finally recognize the fact that this is an adult product that is to be used by adults, not by youth, and it's available in many, many locations, and we're doing ourselves a disservice by not taking advantage of the taxes available that the state provides for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. For my part, I would like to simply echo a few of the sentiments that have already been expressed, certainly with respect to the upcoming Fourth of July ceremonies, and for anyone who might be interested in making a contribution toward those activities, the fireworks principally, if you, if you need assistance in making that happen, we can just, if you would reach out to anyone on the council, we can certainly help to put you in contact with the organizers, and they would be very grateful for your contribution. The Juneteenth celebration was, I think, a tremendous success. It was our second annual official celebration here in the town of Bridgewater, and I certainly enjoyed my participation and enjoyed all the speeches and the various discussions that took place. It was really a very, a very well-run, very organized event. Bridgewater Citizen, Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights and the First Parish Unitarian Universalist Church are certainly to be commended for their work in organizing that, together with all the volunteers as well, of course. Just to pick up on one comment, Counselor Moore reminded us that the school year is about to come to a conclusion, and one thing we should all bear in mind in connection with that is simply public safety, because certainly, many of those schoolchildren are going to be on our roads, on our streets, much more so than we perhaps have been expecting or have experienced in recent months, and we simply need to apply an additional measure of precaution in our driving and in everything else we do, because children will be about all the time. That's the only further comment I have, and I want to thank everyone for their participation and their attendance here this evening, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, once again?
Sure. Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.